Hello, welcome to the sixth and final 2014 Candidate Forums sponsored by the Wilmer Area League of Women Voters. My name is Jessica Roloff and I am the current president of the Wilmer Chapter. On behalf of the local league, we would like to thank everyone who has helped in any way to make these events possible. Thank you to our candidates who are here tonight. We would also particularly, we would like to thank KWLM for the live broadcasts and the West Central Tribune for the follow-up coverage in the paper. We would also like to thank the City of Wilmer for the use of the Municipal Utilities Building and for allowing our local public access channel to record, archive, and rebroadcast our forums. It is important to remember that the Local League of Women Voters forums are organized and carried out by volunteers. Our local voter services budget is generally less than $400. Our local league could never afford to hire a private recording crew or to buy the airtime needed to broadcast these forums to the widest possible audience without the assistance of KWLM and our local access channel and support from the City of Wilmer. We have a long history together and look forward to a continued partnership in providing the voters a chance to learn more about the people who are running for public office. I would like to also recognize Jan Forkrude, the Chair of our Voter Services Committee, and all of our dedicated volunteers. Finally, I would like to thank the current Mayor Frank Yanisch, both for our ongoing partnership with the city and for his attendance at all of our city forums. This is generally the time where I would read our mission statement. It is a well-written statement, but tonight, I would like to break it into simpler terms. The League of Women Voters is a diverse group of women who during elections work around one simple but important principle. We work to ensure that all citizens eligible to vote do so and that voters have the opportunity to know who and what they are voting for. We are nonpartisan, meaning we do not endorse any candidates for office. As a league, we do not campaign for or against any candidate or political party. We accept questions from the general public, screening them only to ensure that they pertain to the office being sought, that they are clear and understandable, can be answered by all of the candidates, and are not personal in nature. Our candidates have received in advance a copy of guidelines and rules for tonight's event. Our forums, as always, remain free and open to the public, and we welcome the participation of all members of the community. There has been much said about anticipation for this forum tonight, and I personally am very much looking forward to it. And I believe that we will have, with much contention, it also means much interest. And quite frankly, I love where we live, and the opposite of love is not hate, it is indifference. And I want you to know that tonight, we have received 28 questions. There's no way we will make it to all 28 questions, but those questions indicate to me that people care about this city and they care about what each one of you has to offer to it. So with that, I would like to introduce you to our moderator for the evening, a fellow league member from the Wayzetta Plymouth area, Bev Benson.
We are in the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Building conference room broadcasting live on the radio on KWLM. This forum is also being taped for viewing on public access TV as well as available online at the City of Wilmer website and KWLM website. We welcome written questions from our live audience. Those listening on KWLM may call in your questions. The phone number to do that is (651) 470-5067. Please remember to shut up all electronic devices. The league asks that no pictures or recordings be taken during the forum by anyone other than league-approved members of the media. Candidates may have paper and pencil, but no electronics. We would appreciate a quiet audience at all times due to the live broadcast. Again, I'll repeat, the phone number is (651) 470-5067 for those wishing to submit questions. Now, let's meet the candidates. There are seven candidates before us. They are from left to right.
Six.
Andrew Plowman, Bruce DeBlique, Bob Enos, Rick Fagerly, Steve Gardner, and Ron Christensen. That is six. Thank you. Each of those candidates will begin with an opening statement. Each candidate will have two minutes to provide an opening statement. There will be a stop sign. Once the stop sign is raised by the timers to my left, please finish your sentence or the moderator will have to respectfully interrupt and will move to the next speaker. No attack of a personal nature will be tolerated. We know all candidates will participate in a professional manner. The order of openings have been drawn, and the person that drew number one to speak is Andrew Plowman. Thank you.
Well, then I get to be the first to officially thank the league for promoting this event and for hosting these events. It's a very important type of discussion that we have every election cycle. I appreciate the neutral stance that they take in providing information to the voters. Very important. More importantly, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and for making your presence known and felt. It's a positive thing for myself to see that people know what's going on in the community and they care, and that's a big deal. For myself, I know that this is one thing that I can share with all of you in the room, is the fact that we care. We care about the future of this community, where we're going and how we're going to get there. And we all would like to influence the process. Nationally, we each get but one vote, and our vote means only so much. On the state level, it's a little bit better. We can vote and we have certain relationships to our local representatives and whatnot, but even that, they're pulled in so many different directions. But local politics matters. This is what affects our lives on a daily basis. It affects our friends and our family, and this is where stuff happens. And that is why I'm here. I'm 31 years of age, born and raised in Wilmer. My name is Andrew Plowman, I forgot that one. And we have chosen to raise our family here, and we did that for very specific reasons, because we believe this is the type of community that we want to raise our kids in. We don't take that lightly. We have two under the ages of four and two, and we've realized that, you know, this is a big investment. This is a lot of time, and I believe that this is going to be time well-spent shaping the next 25 years, because I believe we have a responsibility to leave it better than we found it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeBlique.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Bruce DeBlique. I'm a longtime resident of Wilmer. This is where I and my wife Phyllis live and where we raised our two sons. I'm a longtime community volunteer, and more than 20 years ago, I made a decision to join the city council and make a difference in our community. Community service is very important to me, and being a council member allows me to give back to my community to ensure residents receive quality services. Wilmer needs to have a long-range shared vision. There are many different city services that people rely on in their day-to-day lives. Many of these are seen as essential or basic services. I believe the top priorities are infrastructure needs, maintenance of our city buildings, parks, roads, and technology. I also encourage development of our industrial park. As a regional center, we need to work together to create a welcoming environment to bring new and expanding businesses to Wilmer that also give residents higher wages. Wilmer has a diverse population, which we need to embrace and recognize. The good things that are happening, we also need to recognize what it brings to the community and how we can expand for the future. We need to invest in the community and allow it to grow, but we need to be fiscally responsible as leaders with the appropriate amenities and strong infrastructure. I want to see Wilmer be a place for people to live, work, and play. Wilmer is a growing regional center. It needs to provide leadership to its citizens and also to the surrounding area. I think that city officials need to think logically and rationally about the issues facing the community. As leaders of our community, we need to work together as a team to make good choices for the future, and we need to engage the community and focus on our long-range visions and move Wilmer forward.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Well, thank you very much, all of you, for coming out tonight. I know it's not a very nice night inclement weather-wise, and it was probably an inconvenience to be here. My name is Bob Enos. I'm the newest entrance to Wilmer that's sitting at the table tonight, which, in my case, I hope will be a breath of fresh air, a new perspective, and maybe just a different way to see things through a different lens as to what's been happening in Wilmer and where we could go from here. I had an appointment today for a medical procedure, nothing very important, but you know, I thought if I'm going to run for office and if I want to be here for the next four years, I want you all to be assured that I'm completely healthy and not too old to have this job. Okay? So, let me say this. Let me quote a piece that our friends at the West Central Tribune posted in the paper, either today or yesterday in one of the editorials, and they were paraphrasing a very famous line from the late Ronald Reagan. Are you better off now than you were, in our case, let's say, 20 years ago? Wilmer has seen incredible financial, social changes in that period of time. We'll get into all of that, I'm sure, before the night's over. Here's my question. Half of the members of the city council have been here for 20 years, and in 20 years, they've watched what I think is the long, slow slide of Wilmer. I'd like to know if we're ready to prevent that slide from taking us into oblivion. And if you'd like some help, I think I have the answer. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerly.
I am Rick Fagerly. I was born and raised here, graduated from high school in the community college, went to school in Mankato, and came back here. I have my own appraisal company, which I started in 1991. I'm married. We just celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary in September, and my wife is Darla, is a nurse at the clinic. We have three grown children. They all live in the area. We have six grandchildren. I love Wilmer. I plan on staying here. That's why I'm running for city council again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Bev, Jessica, and the league, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Steve Gardner. I'm a 32-year resident of Wilmer with my wife Kelly, and our daughter's family also resides in the second ward. Now, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results, will just keep us stuck. I'm running for the council because I want to express a vision for the future of a new Wilmer. The Wilmer of today is a city with great challenges, to be sure, but it's also one of great promise. I want to focus on what's right with Wilmer. We have a diverse economy and a diverse population, capable of being players on a regional and even, yes, a world stage. In many ways, we are the envy of other cities. But we are currently stuck withinaction and a fear of the future. We can't kick the can down the road anymore. It's time to look at Wilmer through a new lens, and it's time for us to prepare for the Wilmer of the future. Every generation before us worked to make the world a better place for the next generations. We owe our best to those who want to come here and make their place in the world and in our city, and we need a council with vision and passion for this city, unafraid of the future and willing to roll up its sleeves to move us forward. I'm running for the council because I want to devote myself to this cause. I want my daughter, my son-in-law, my grandchildren, and your children and grandchildren to have the same or better opportunities than Wilmer has afforded us. It's time to help write the next great chapter in our city's history, and I'm the candidate...
Thank you very much. I'm going to move to the next candidate. Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you again to the league and to all of you for attending tonight. It's very comforting to see people interested in local government. I am Ron Christensen, and I'm running for reelection to Ward II City Council of Wilmer. I was born and raised in Wilmer. I spent all but eight years of my life in Ward II. The first six years of my life were spent over 200 feet away from the railroad track on 15th Street Southwest. My mother and father and five children lived in a three-bedroom, two-story apartment. We had no hot water. We had no bathroom. We had a closet door underneath the stairway that there was a little pot in there, and my father emptied it every night. These are some things you don't know about me. I also carried the West Central Tribune along with my four brothers for 22 years. I believe it's the running record in Wilmer. I'm running because I still have a passion, as I've said before, to be where all the decisions are made for my neighborhood, my ward, and our city in general. Too many times, we in our busy lives don't have the time to attend all the commission, board, and council meetings where all the decisions are made for our lives and our neighborhoods. I am not, I am fully invested in Wilmer, and I have no higher expectations of higher office. I want to represent the people of Ward II. I have for 20 years. I'd like to do it for four more years. My brothers and I have built a business in Wilmer, 35 years in the construction business. Our success is directly related to the success of Wilmer, so I have a big interest in continuing Wilmer to move ahead. I have three grown children, six grandchildren. My wife and I, Janine, have been married...
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We're going to, thank you. We're going to move to the next first question. These are 1.5-minute responses or 90-second responses. The first question to Mr. DeBlique is, "What is your plan to address aging infrastructure in our parks, our streets, our city-owned buildings, including the historic city auditorium and city offices?" The first responder is Mr. DeBlique.
Thank you, Bev. I guess to improve the infrastructure, we need to think creatively about the way we spend money and save money. As leaders, we need to review our street construction cost, our assessment policy, and our tax rates for the services that we provide and assess our residents for. We need to follow our street maintenance plan and our construction plan to ensure the investment in our infrastructure. We need to review the fees that we charge for services which are a direct benefit to the specific users of specific buildings and programs, like the ice rink pool, some of the parks. But we need to acknowledge that cuts in any services, inner amenities would affect the quality of life and ability to attract people and families into the community as well. I have concerns about fees, and the amount of fees that we charge would limit some of the services that are available to our residents. We should also consider a local option sales tax, but the tax needs to be for a specific project and is in place for a limited amount of time, and then we give the voters an opportunity to vote on the local option. But we really need to engage the community and figure out what their priorities are.
Thank you very much. Next candidate is Mr. Enos.
Of all the services that a community can provide to its residents, public safety, transportation, I can think of none more important. To the extent that we have professionals on staff whose charge is to keep us rolling down our streets safely, there's absolutely no reason that I can think of why this should be a high-priority problem or interest for us. This should be a no-brainer. I would suspect that infrastructure maintenance is not rocket science, folks. The real question is, within the context of all of the priorities that a city has, where do those expenses and chores fit within our overall program? That's a political process. That's not an administrative or a bureaucratic process, and if we aren't aware of just how important these fixes are that we need to stay on top of, I suspect that what that means is that our staff is not speaking loudly enough. But at the end of the day, it's our job right here to make sure that those infrastructure needs are met, are met within budget, and any suggestion for higher taxes or fees, I would be looking at with a very strong microscope.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerly.
Thank you. Well, it's a tough decision and a complex problem. We're discussing that now in the finance meetings. We have increased the levy by $147,000, and we want to continue that to help pay for some infrastructure over the next 10 years. We've got to remember, our property tax, the city gets $4,100,000. That's about 21 cents on $1,000. So if your property tax is $1,000, we get $210. The county gets 60%. The school gets around 18%, 19%. So when our Public Works budget is $4 million, and our Public Safety Department is about $4 million, where does that $4,100,000 from property tax go to pay? We've got to find ways, other ways, to get income to pay for these projects, and we are discussing maybe a local option sales tax in 16 or 17 with the help of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Well, the basic problem here is that past councils have not addressed the funding issue. When I served on the council 10 years ago, this was a problem then, and in the past 10 years, we simply have not had that discussion until now in an election year. Now, Councilmember Anderson's come up with a couple of ideas to begin to address the problem, perhaps increasing our city levy slightly to pay for the costs of renovating the auditorium as well as our streets program. And we should take a look at authorization for another local option sales tax. Excuse me. That won't happen until 2016 if the voters say yes, and that would in part help us raise funds to allow us to take care of these most critical and, take care of our most critical and dangerous streets. The main advantage to a local option sales tax is that the burden won't fall solely on property owners, but it's spread across all users, whether they live in town or not. I would support that if it has a defined beginning and end, and only for a certain amount of money to be financed.
Thank you. Mr. Plowman.
I am...
No, Mr. Plowman.
I'm a firm believer in the idea that you do not raise taxes unless it's absolutely necessary. So I believe that that should be our last resort, and we should first follow a prioritization schedule. I believe, long-term, that maintenance is the end goal and the ultimate fix for these problems. However, to address the situations where things have fallen under disrepair, they have to be addressed, and the money for that has to come from somewhere. So that, it's an unfortunate fact, I'm not comfortable with that fact, but I would be in favor of a plan that would move a motion forward to address these items that need to be fixed, coupled with a comprehensive maintenance plan, looking forward so that we know that we're not going to be spending extra money in the future, completely rebuilding things that could have been maintained, and we could do that in a fiscally responsible manner. I think a comprehensive plan like that could be something that could be open for the community and for everybody to address. I think that would, long-term, that would be the answer we're looking for for the next, say, 20, 25, 30 years.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Would you repeat the question?
Certainly. "What is your plan to address aging infrastructure in our parks, our streets, our city-owned buildings, including the historic city auditorium and city offices?"
Well, it all takes funding, and where's that funding going to come from? We've been talking about it at Public Works and at the Finance Committee meetings. I've come up with a couple ideas that haven't been explored very much. One of them is, at the end of each year that we budget, we have what we call unspent funds. It's money that was allocated during the budget, previous year's budget, under our capital improvement plan. And this year, there was over $600,000 in that unspent funds. Normally, we take that money and just roll it over in the next year's budget. I've proposed that we should take that money, along with Mr. Johnson, and set it aside for improvements of infrastructure. There's another item, another place to get some money, and that is our expanded tax base. Every year, new buildings are built in Wilmer, new businesses come to town. They expand our tax base so that we receive more money the following year in property taxes. Why don't we take that money and direct it toward infrastructure needs? Those are two ideas. Mr. Anderson has also proposed a tax levy increase just to go toward the infrastructure. We need to prioritize our issues in Wilmer, and streets should be one of the top ones. And we'll come up with some more ideas where we can fund them, but not to raise taxes.
Thank you. The next question, "In seeking this office, have you spoken to the Somali and Hispanic residents and business owners? If not, why not? If so, what conversations did you have?" And the first responder is Mr. Christensen.
No, I have not spoken to the Somali or Hispanic cultures about the election. I live in Ward II, and about 60% of the people in my ward are retired, elderly people. I knock on their doors and talk to them. I know that I would be here to represent the entire city of Wilmer, but for November 4th, I need to convince the people of Ward II to reelect me so I can represent them and the city.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Generally speaking, in my travels around the city, I get the opportunity to have conversations with a lot of different people from a lot of different backgrounds. I haven't had specific conversations about the election, but I do get an opportunity to visit with folks and find out what their lives are like and what it is that we can do as potential council members and as citizens, what we can do to help our newest residents become successful and comfortable within our culture as well. We have some conversations that we do need to have with ourselves in the majority culture, and those are going to be uncomfortable for us, but we need to have them and we need to come to an understanding of the other cultures around us. And we need to have them comfortable with our culture as well, because we all, at the end of the day, have to work together for a city that actually works for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerly.
Probably haven't done as good a job as I would like to, but I have been downtown and shopped in a couple of the stores and eaten at a couple of the restaurants. There are a couple employees at Walmart I do talk to when I go in there. They're very friendly. Hispanics, I know a few that are good friends of my kids and grandkids, so I have done some, but probably not enough.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
You know, I've lived in cities nearly all my adult life, always large cities, always quite diverse cities, so living in diversity is nothing at all new to me, and frankly, it was one of the attractions for me in living to Wilmer. I like the real world. I've lived amongst Dominicans, Koreans, Italians, Greeks, Yugoslavians, you name it, I've been there. But this business of the Somali assimilation has really captivated my interest. And for the most part, as I talk to people around my ward, especially around downtown, it's clear to me there's an awful lot of misinformation, urban legend, rumors as to why are we here, what prefaced this whole scenario, where could we go? Let's talk about this specific population for a moment. What we seem to forget sometimes is that the Somali population is very unique in America as being one of the only political refugee immigrations that we've had in this country in the last 20 years. Maybe the Guatemalans during Iran-Contra was the only other one. I've, in the last month, spoken with people at the UN High Commission on Immigration. I've spoken with people in other cities and towns who share the same issues that we do, smaller outstate towns, and what I'm going to tell you in as short a way as I can is this. When governments and church... to tell you in as short a way as I can is this. When governments and church organizations organized this immigration, no one spoke to us about this. No one.
Thank you. Mr. DeBlique.
Yeah, thank you. Representing Ward 1, that's where the many Somalis and Hispanic populations live up there in our ward. And I have spoken to a number of them as we've been out campaigning and door knocking. They want pretty much the same thing as any other resident of Wilmer. They want to be, live here, raise their family, feel safe in the community, and that we have a good government and a well-run city. So...
Thank you. Mr. Plomman.
It's a touchy, touchy subject. And I think it's really, really sad that it's a touchy subject because, well, I credit the national media with that. We only hear what the, what the media tells us, and the only ideas that we're able to form are based on what the media is showing us and telling us that we have to believe and we have to feel. I think political correctness here is, is killing us because this is a dialogue that has to take place and, and it's something that should be open and easy. And yet, we haven't done it. And I, I blame myself just as much for not doing that. I've recently had my eyes opened because my wife now works in the school system, and she worked previously at ACMC for quite a few years before that. She had the opportunity to meet so many people and to start educating me on the various cultures and the various methods of communication and whatnot. She's, she's opened my eyes to a whole, a whole culture that I didn't know, I didn't know how it worked previously. I think that, boy, getting everybody together and on the same page and creating that open running dialogue and communication is probably easier than, than maybe even what we've given, given it credit. We just have to do it. But we can't look, we can't look back in the past. All, all we can do is know where we want to get to in the future and go with it.
Thank you. The next question. At the League of Minnesota Cities, the city of Wilmer is seen as a leader in the Green Steps Cities Program. What is your vision for efficient public buildings, complete structures, parks and trails, and renewable energy? And Mr. Enos is the first responder.
Well, I have to confess, I don't know very much about this Green Steps program, but it sounds as though it caters to a part of the population that enjoys outdoor recreation, exercise, a certain lifestyle, and that's fine. To the extent that it probably only services a relatively small portion of the population, I would question where that fits in the overall scheme of priorities for our city. It seems to me that if we've got seniors here, retired people on fixed incomes that maybe don't spend a lot of time on bike trails, it might not be real reasonable to expend, expect them to fund that sort of an expense. So I guess my suggestion would be, let's take care of the basics first. Some of those secondary and tertiary issues, we can catch them on the fly. But right now, I frankly think we have a lot more important fish to fry here in town.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerley.
Thank you. This was brought to the council a couple of years ago by Andrew Beer, who's an architect for Ingen and Associates. And he got the council to go on board with it. He's trying to improve efficiency in public buildings with solar, wind energy, and create some walking paths, paths and bike trails. So we don't have to use our vehicles quite as much. But that was brought to the council through a group of interested people.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
The Green Steps program, as I recall, also revolves around healthy living, giving people opportunity to walk in their downtown. For example, there are a number of walking paths designed specifically in the downtown. But it also revolves around what I call, and what Vision 2040 folks call, things to do. We are a healthy people in Minnesota in general, and I think Wilmerites are a little above average in that, in that regard as well. But one of the other things that it also wants us to address are public infrastructure and the energy usage in that. Now, I don't know what this council has done, but I hope that in looking at the renovations that have been taking place in the auditorium, that they've looked at that issue. It does bring up a larger issue in that we do also have an aging municipal power plant. And those discussions are going to have to take place. And I know that the utilities just hired a consultant yesterday, I believe, to help them with that visioning over the next 10 years. And I think that's going to be an important issue for us.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. As Rick stated, Andy Beer came to the council a couple of years ago with this idea, he and a group of people. And it's, it's based around healthy living, as he said, and bike paths and, and walking paths and making use of, or making more, our buildings, public buildings more efficient. In, in the scope of things, as Mr. Enos said, I think this is a little lower on our priority list. And I think there are better things for us to look at. But we support them. And if there's any funding, I'm sure they'll be coming to us.
Thank you. Mr. Plomman.
I believe that green development, sustainable design is something that's a trend-setting issue right now when it comes to construction and development across the country. The problem is it's very expensive, and there's a lot of regulation, there's a lot of oversight. And it's difficult to do if you're not working with really big budgets. I work in the specialty constructions, products industry, and I can tell you that you have to up your budget by sometimes 125 to 150 percent in order to develop buildings that are LEED accredited, is, is what they call it. To be honest, it's a consortium. It's, it's, it's very costly. And like I said, it only makes sense when you have really large budgets to work with and sometimes surplus of cash. And it's actually only economically viable when it's subsidized. And so, looking from that aspect of it, I'm not a huge proponent of that end for a community our size. Maybe someday in the future, it might make sense. And that's something that should always be entertained. Everything should be on the table.
Thank you. Mr. DeBlique.
Yes, thank you. The one thing that we've been looking at is completing the bike path loop around the community. There's various connections in that path where we need to complete a few short sections of it that would complete the loop around the entire community. And that there comes in with things to do and things for the residents and the young people to do around town. Also with our municipal utilities, our power plant, our cogeneration power plant, we're looking at, under EPA regulations, what we have to do to try and reduce some of our dependency on high-carbon fuels, which would bring us more in, more in line with the capacities and what we can do there. We need, we need to look at when we do maintenance and on our buildings and renovate our buildings to try and improve the energy efficiency of those buildings by adding more insulation and the like. And one other thing that we've been doing is the area of lighting is, we just installed a number of LED streetlights down on Wilmer Avenue. And those lights are a third the efficiency of what the high-pressure sodium lights are. So...
Thank you. The next question. There is at least a perception that crime is a growing problem in the city of Wilmer. Do you believe this perception is accurate? And what do you think we need to do to help people be, be and feel safe and welcome to our city? And the first responder is Mr. Fagerley.
I believe we have a strong police force. We're at almost full capacity now, and we are getting a K-9 unit again, along with the Sheriff's Department. I've always supported a strong police department. I'll continue to do that. And I, I don't believe that there's a high crime, crime rate here. So...
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Wilmer is, I believe, overall, a safe city. I think there's a perception that certain areas are not. I think that perception is most acutely pointed at the downtown, and I don't think that's an accurate perception. Before I came to this event tonight, I went onto the city website, looked under the police department, looked at their crime mapping tool, and looked at crimes over the past six months. And downtown is no more likely to have crime than anywhere else in our city. And in the second ward, we have exceptionally safe areas. The West Winds area, which was a subject of some concern over six years ago, is one of the safest areas in town today. It's just as safe as Hanson Drive, just as safe as Ramblewood, just as safe as virtually any place in the second ward. Now, we did go without some police protection for a while. We weren't fully staffed, and I, and I may get an opportunity to speak about that later because my time is almost up.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. Wilmer is a safe community to live in. We, I just came from the Public Works Public Safety meeting at 4:45 PM this afternoon. And to begin each meeting, we have our chief, Mr. Felton, Chief of Police, give us the number of calls the previous two weeks and how many inmates are in the county jail, how many are from the city, and how many are from out of, out of town. We have beds that are rented by the state and federal government. Wilmer averages about 700 police calls for service every two weeks. Goes down in the wintertime, up in the summertime. As Mr. Gardner stated, the calls for service downtown are very little. I know there's a perception that it's an unsafe place to go, but actually, if you look at the police records, there are very few service calls from the police department to downtown Wilmer. We also have a very active drug task force that works in conjunction with the county. And he reported to us today that the drug activity is down. They've got a very good handle on it. There's still some happening here. But once again, it's, it's a very safe place. We have about 32 policemen on, on our board. And we have retirements coming up there, so we'll be adding some more people to that. But, well, speaking of West Winds, Mr. Gardner mentioned the safest place in town. I, I live two blocks from there. And the first year it was open, there was 11 calls per month from the police department. It's gone down to about five or six calls per month, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Plomman.
I believe Wilmer is safe and it's a safe community. I believe for the most part, people do feel safe. There's obviously crime and different types of crime, but violent crime, for example, is something that's, that's been historically low. I believe Vision 2040 took a look at the hard data, and that's the one thing that we can't really dispute. And the numbers showed that when looking at the rates of crime comparatively to other communities our size, we were right average. And that's, that's, that's a good thing because the, those other communities are developed, those other communities are growing, and those other communities are considered to have responsible and, and proactive police forces. And I think as long as, as our communication is maintained between ourselves, the, the council, the citizens, and our police force, we can probably do a really good job at staying on the forefront of any of these problems before they ever do become a, a big problem.
Thank you. Mr. DeBlique.
Thank you. We said, the police chief always gives us an update on crime, crime statistics in the, in the community. And Congressman Christensen is correct, we are very low crime rate. We have a drug task force, and our gang task force is very active. And we are also adding a K-9 unit to our, to our police department, which will help assist in some of those officers and what they do. But we all want a safe place, and a safe place to raise our families and to live and to feel safe in our community. I think a lot of it is perception, perception that, of the unknown. I know I've heard a lot of people say that downtown is not safe, but I think downtown is probably one of the safest areas in town. I think it's pretty much all perception. But our crime is lower than many metropolitan areas. And I think everybody that lives here wants to feel safe and needs to feel safe. So...
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Thank you. The issue of downtown is particularly of interest to me since it's a major part of, of my ward. There indeed is a perception that downtown is a dangerous place. I suspect that the perception comes, has resulted in people, especially white people, avoiding downtown at night. So you can't very well have crime if there's nobody there. So I think that's, that's the basis of the downtown scenario at night. You know, one thing that I'd like to have a venue at some point to speak more about is this, and it relates, once again, I'll bring this back, to the difference between minority migration and migration by people who have suffered terrible violence as political refugees. In 1999 and 2000, the UN declared Somalia to be the most failed nation-state on the face of the earth. In 10 years, children from five years of age and older, 50 percent of them died from starvation. When our INS sent over psychological screeners to begin to look at those people who would be most eligible to come to the United States, they concluded that 100 percent of the people they interviewed suffered from extreme post-traumatic stress disorder. This isn't ordinary immigration. We need to understand this if we're going to make this work.
Thank you. The next question. There is a concern that women are not treated with equal respect by some members of the current city council. What would you do to ensure women are equally respected and represented in the city of Wilmer? The first responder is Mr. Gardner.
I think people have seen with their own eyes and heard with their own ears some of the things that have happened in regard to the council over the past year and a half. I'm not going to insult their intelligence by telling them what they heard and what they saw, except to say, you saw it right. But it's a larger issue of respect for everybody on the council, and the council also having respect for city staff, for citizens, for the business community, and for other organizations within town. It really does start at the top. It starts with this council deciding that they're going to turn away from the politics of negativity and that they're going to be open. And they're going to listen instead of shutting down debate that they don't want to hear. I think it's a fundamental question of civility. And we haven't had enough civility on this council. I tried, when I was on the council, to get us to embrace this civility question, and it went absolutely nowhere. And we really have to jump back into that conversation again. And it needs to change, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Repeat the question.
Certainly. There is a concern that women are not treated with equal respect by some members of the current city council. What would you do to ensure women are equally respected and represented in the city of Wilmer?
I believe you started out with, there is a perception.
There is a concern.
Concern.
Correct.
I think it's perception only. Many of you have watched the council meetings. If there's any uncivility at all, it's probably with the, our local newspaper and their editors not treating some of the council members very highly. And I happen to be one of those. Here I am, a successful businessman of 35 years and one with my brothers, who expand the tax base by building buildings. And we get bashed and want to get kicked out of town by our local editors and by some community members. I mean, the perception of women being treated unequal or badly on the council is just that, it's perception. There's nothing wrong with discussion, even if disagreements. It's healthy. It's been happening for 200 years in this country at all levels of government. And it's healthy. I mean, if we all thought the same, we, we... I mean, if we all thought the same, we wouldn't need a city council. I think it's perception only, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Plowman.
Look, we are in the court of public opinion. I firmly believe that the way that people see it, regardless if that is the truth or not, the way people see it, that's the way it is. And that's why we got to be very, very careful how we move forward. That's the only thing that I have to offer. I'm not going to make any apologies or any of that regarding what's happened in the past because it didn't involve me. But I can tell you this. I am 100% sold on the idea that we need more diversity at the table. We need people from all aspects of the community, all different faiths, professions, whatever. We need a lot of people representing their demographic around the community. If that means more women need to be involved, then more women need to be involved. I don't see there any drawbacks with that. But as far as, you know, as far as how we're going to work this out, I don't think it's anything that has to be worked out. I think it's something that we need to acknowledge, and then we need to move forward, put the past in the past.
Thank you. Mr. DeBleek.
Thank you. There has been some criticism of the council for not taking every member of the council and staff seriously. We need to take accountability, move Wilmer forward in the right directions. There's also been criticism and concerns about the council's performance. We are a team, and we have to keep Wilmer's best interests at heart. And as a council, we have had disagreements on some of our strategic plans and long-range visions. All the members of the council need to take the full responsibility for some of the downfalls that we have had. We, as a team, and we are working together to make it better and a stronger community. And like to see diversity come to the table. We need to bring all aspects of the community to the table, and engage them, and engage the community, and move Wilmer forward.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
You know, my mother came from a family of Irish potato farmers in northern Maine. Irish people have a certain way of working things out in their family. They tend to be sort of strong and silent types. They play it real low-key, they play the cards close to the vest, but they have their style of working things out. The operative notion there being, at the end of the day, you work it out. Now, on my father's side, he was born from immigrants from a very poor part of Portugal, illiterate they were when they came to this country. And as southern Mediterranean, much like Italians, they talk with their arms and their hands a lot, and they yell a lot, and they jump around a lot. My mother's family would have thought that dysfunctional, but it was just their style. And when they got all done, they shook hands, they made their deal, they still loved each other, and they kept moving forward. As far as representation of gender and diversity on the council, and on boards and commissions, for that matter, half of our population is female, but we only have one councilperson who's female. 35% of our population is minority, but we have virtually no people filling 80 slots on boards and commissions in town. And this isn't unique to Wilmer. If you all saw the Star Tribune on Sunday, oh, we've got a lot of company in the metro. Very soon, we're going to have a population, according to experts, in which the minority in 2040 will be the majority. We need to prepare.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerley.
It might be a perception. I've been on the council for 21 years, and there's been five different females as council people. And prior to that, there was Irma Peterson, so... I only can do what I can do for myself, and I always act professional, polite, and cordial, and I treat everyone equally, so...
Thank you. The next question. Rice Memorial Hospital is the responsibility of the city of Wilmer, and as such, the council. Should the recent financial losses be a concern, and if so, how do you plan to address the situation? The first responder is Mr. Christensen.
Rice Memorial Hospital is an asset to Wilmer. If you talk to many of the people, the citizens of Wilmer, they want to keep that hospital. They've been through some turmoil in the past few years. The number of beds occupied every night has gone way down. It is a concern for the city. However, they have a reserve fund that they've been using to make the hospital viable and open. I don't think we have to be in any major worry or concern presently, because they have many... They're part of many outside entities, partnerships, one of them being the Rice Care Center, which is a very successful entity for the hospital and for the city. As you can see, they've been adding on to it the last couple of years and remodeling it. And it is a five-star hotel facility. People that have gone over there, my mother was there for a week or two convalescing, and I don't think we have to worry presently about it, but it is the city's property, and if they were to fail, it would come out of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Plowman.
I'm going to agree with that. I believe that Rice and the whole Rice organization is an asset to the community. I believe our level of quality health care here in town is rated very high, and I believe a lot of people travel from around to obtain their quality health care here. My personal experiences there have been fantastic. After their entire renovation and addition program, we had two children born there. The people and the personnel, they're all top-notch that I've worked with. I believe that is an asset to the city that's worth keeping. That means also keeping responsibly. We got to keep track of the numbers, watch the numbers, specifically pension liabilities. I think that's something that maybe not a whole lot of people understand and know what's all going on there, but it's something on the books that's definitely going to take attention, and we're going to have to keep that at the forefront moving forward in the future years. But I think we have enough responsible, and the personnel that are involved there, I believe are, you know, the best at what they do, and I trust their oversight of it as well.
Thank you. Mr. DeBleek.
Thank you. Rice Hospital is probably one of our biggest assets, probably also one of our biggest liabilities. We have excellent staff there that oversee the operations of the hospital and keep it on track. There has been many changes with the Affordable Health Care Act that they're dealing with. I think part of that is to look at some partnerships and constortiums, and working more as partner with other health care facilities within the community. Also have Rice Care Center, which has just been fully renovated. I believe there's an open house there tomorrow evening. My mother-in-law is a resident there, and it's a very excellent facility. And with the completion of the renovation there, that facility is up to full staff and full speed. And also, Rice Home Medical is doing very well, providing income back to the hospital. And with that, Rice is very strong, they have a very strong balance sheet, and I think they'll continue to be a strong asset within the city.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Well, I'm probably going to take a whack on this from some of my supporters in the morning, but I didn't come to this table to lie to anybody. My background is, in a minor way, in government, but my heart is in business. So let me tell you what I think. The health care landscape today is such that it's very treacherous water, even for the biggest experts in the hospital business to pull it off and remain solvent, if not profitable. Most hospitals that I know of are nonprofits, even the large conglomerates. Those hospitals that continue to thrive seem to do so by consolidating and merging with other hospitals, because the market is mature, which means the only way they can keep above water is to reduce their costs. The only way that you can do that is when you can share costs with many hospitals, group purchasing and group buying, and a way to keep your overhead down. If it were me... Let me back up. As a political science student many years ago, the question was, what is in the public good and what is not? Those services that the private sector does not find profitable to participate in or can't make money at are those areas that generally go to the public sector. Hospitals and health care isn't one of them. I think we need to put everything on the table and recognize the fact that this may be a long-term liability that we don't need exposure to.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerley.
The hospital is an asset, but we do have to keep an eye on it, because they are in debt 56 million, somewhere around there. And they've had to diversify themselves over the years with Rice Care Center and Home Medical. The reimbursement just isn't there from the government for Medicare and Medicaid, but they do have a plan that should probably come out in the next few months to help get them back on track, but we do have to keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Just to go back briefly to the previous question, I do not think that it was healthy for my opponent to tell Councilmember Audrey Nelson that she didn't have enough time or experience to weigh in on a particular issue. I don't think that was healthy. As to Rice Hospital, I want to, in the interest of transparency, Rice is a client of mine in my professional line of work. I believe that Rice is an amazing, amazing asset to our city. Certainly, there are financial considerations that need to be taken into account, and that's why they have health care professionals who work in that field each and every day to figure out, for example, Medicare reimbursements, positioning within the marketplace. And they work in that every day. Certainly, the city council needs to have some oversight in that regard, because at the end of the day, it is a taxpayer liability if they go under. But I can't say enough good about what Rice Hospital does for this community. My mother-in-law just recently passed away, and Rice Hospice is an amazing, amazing organization. And our experience has been nothing but exemplary with them.
Thank you. The next question. Give your view on funding for the gun range. Give your view on funding for the gun range. And the first responder is Mr. Plowman.
It's kind of an open-ended question, I guess, because there's an indoor range and there's also an outdoor range. The one that I guess I have the most experience with would be the indoor facility, which would be part of the city auditorium. When it comes to the project that took place over the last couple of years, I guess my main thoughts, I'll just be honest, I'm a gun enthusiast. I enjoy shooting. I enjoy the shooting sports and target practice. The Wilmer Rifle and Pistol Club came forward with the news that the gun range would be closed and that there's potentially hazardous safety concerns. Okay, so I took that at face value, and I think most people did. The part where I started getting concerned is when I started coming to meetings and I started hearing about the dollar values that it was going to cost. I heard two ends of the spectrum. I heard the one end of the spectrum saying, "This is a city building, we should be able to use it, whatever it costs, let's do it." The other end that I heard was, you know, "It is a city building, but nobody ever promised you the right to be able to use that building forever," whatever. So I heard both of those arguments. The feeling I was left with is the fact that the maintenance on this building was way outdated, and the cost to fix the building up was way too high. If it would have been up to me, I would not have authorized the use of that particular dollar amount.
Thank you. Mr. DeBleek.
Thank you. As far as the city auditorium goes, it's a very historic building. It's got... was built back in the '30s under the WPA. There is a lot of historic and cultural significance to that building to Wilmer. It's used by many, many people, in the auditorium, the downstairs, the upstairs, and we have had a gun range located in that building for the past 30 years, I believe. There was some issues with the ventilation system, was never put in properly at the time the gun range was initially installed. It created some issues throughout the building, which we needed to correct. And those corrections of those have been long. We have had an architect firm that we brought in to lead us through that process and make the corrections with cleaning the building, and also with removing the ventilation system and reinstalling the ventilation system, so it is up to code. There is... As far as the gun range, it has a lot of use. There's a lot of people that come to town and it brings into the community to enjoy the sport of shooting down in the range.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Well, this is similar to a couple of questions we've dealt with already, the Rice Hospital issue and the green spaces issue. And it gets back to the broader question of the role of government. I don't know what the share of the population is that are gun enthusiasts, but let's assume just for the sake of discussion that it's not very, very large. So it begs the question, do we want 100% of the taxpayers to pay for recreational activity that might work for 10% of the population? I can't answer that question. That's a question that's best put to the public. And we don't do that very well as an elected government anywhere. We don't ask people. But let's say, suppose, let's just say, suppose, they go, "Yeah, we'd like to have a gun range." Then my next question is this. Is that a service that should be provided by the public sector, or could it just as easily be provided with no exposure to liability by a private operator? It could be that if enthusiasts like Andrew are accustomed to paying fees for using a bow and arrow range, or playing golf, or shooting, maybe this is a viable business. The issue of the viability of using a historical auditorium is a side issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerley.
Well, the gun range was put in the auditorium back in 1978, '79 by the former city engineer and recreation director. I'm not sure why it wasn't maintained, but I know we did hire a consulting firm to do inspections on city buildings for OSHA, because rumor was that OSHA was coming around and starting to give out fines. Our current fire chief went and looked and said it was unsafe and locked it up. So it's a historic building, like Councilman DeBleek said, and we had to do something to it. We use it for gymnasium, for basketball, volleyball, tennis. You just got to continue to use it and have it downtown, so... And we're just going to fix the roof now, too, for $18,000. It was well worth it. And the gun range, people have to pay a fee to use it. It's not free. Same way with recreation activities and noon basketball, so...
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Well, first, let me stipulate, I do own a couple of guns. I enjoy shooting once in a great while. I don't have any inherent problem with recreational sport shooting. A few years ago, probably more than a few, because my memory isn't that good, my niece had a birthday party down in the basement. There's a playroom down there, and the kids can get on these little scooters, and they can have all sorts of fun. And so we're talking, you know, kids three, four, five years old, and just down the hall from that was the gun range. Now, let that soak in for just a second, and remember that lead is exceptionally toxic, and it especially has a bad impact on children. So to think that they had that level of exposure, knowing what we know now, scares me quite a bit. So I'm glad that the city staff took this seriously, that they did an entire look at the facility... the facility, and that the council has authorized all of the repairs necessary to bring the entire building back up to where it needs to be, encapsulating asbestos as well as mitigating the lead. I think they're to be commended for taking care of that entity, and it's a great asset for the entire city.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. The entire auditorium, including the gun range, is on the historical register. We have a war memorial room in there. It's, it was built probably seventy-some years ago, as stated. Now, what it cost us to build it back then, I bet it was less than $100,000. So we've had that building 70 to 80 years for very little money. Now, to put millions of dollars into it to fix it up, if it lasts another 70, 80 years, to me, it is worth it. As far as the gun range, it's been there for 30-plus years. The police department used it for probably 25 of those years. It brings people to Wilmer. There are people that drive 60 miles to come to Wilmer to shoot indoor at the range. There are very few municipal indoor ranges in the state. I bet there's two or three of them. And private ones, there isn't many more. So it's another asset to Wilmer. It brings people downtown. They come here to buy groceries when they're here. They buy gas when they're here. Why wouldn't we want to fix it up and keep it here? I'm also a gun enthusiast, and I see nothing wrong with the Second Amendment. It's being under attack every day, but once again, it brings people to town. And speaking of buildings, they take a McDonald's building and run it for 20 years and tear it down, and then build a new one. This one's lasted 70 to 80 years, and it can last another 70, 80 years, and it's...
Thank you. The last question, this is going to be a one-minute response. Thank you. What is the single biggest issue facing Wilmer, and how will you address it? And the first responder will be Steve Gardner.
I think the primary issue that we have in Wilmer today is that we're at a crossroads. The biggest issue we have right now is that we're running in place. We need to be looking at future needs and trends, and instead, this current council majority has decided to kick the can down the road. We take a look at something as simple as basic street infrastructure, and my opponent has been chair of the Public Works Public Safety Committee for years, and we've known that we've been falling behind on that particular issue for the last 10 years, and he's still done nothing until now, in an election year, when they're finally starting to look at it. We need a change on the council so that we can start looking forward instead of wishing for the past. We need to respect our past, we need to remember it, but we need to look at the future for the sake of our kids and our grandkids. That, to me, is the most important thing that we have issued today.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
As I've stated before many times, the number-one issue now and in the future is funding our future budgets. Folks, it takes money to run this city. If we don't have streets to deliver the services on, we're going nowhere. If we get proper funding, we can fix our streets, but funding is the major issue. I mean, our budget, 10 years ago, going into 2005, it was $19 million, both our operating budget and our capital improvement program. Today, it's $33 million. The only way we're going to continue to funding, to fund our budget, is to expand our tax base. We need new businesses to come to town, we need an industrial park to fill up, we need more houses built in Wilmer for all the working people. That expands our tax base and increases our tax revenue for years to come. I don't see any other way but to expand the tax base, and we're doing it. We've been doing it.
Thank you. Mr. Plowman.
I believe it's quite simple, economic growth and development. Wilmer is being outpaced, if you look at surrounding states and surrounding cities. Especially our industrial growth, we are being outpaced. You can slice it any way you want it, that's where the money comes from. The fact that we have jobs, you know, they have more jobs, their jobs pay more. You know, the fact that they have, they have opportunities, and, you know, they're developing, well, we've done that, too. We've done things well, but they're doing it better. Just because things that we've done in the past have been good or good enough, that's status quo stuff. If we can't rise above that and start competing in the market that has the ability to take our success, we're going to go nowhere, because that's where the revenue is derived, that's where all the other supportive businesses come in, that's how you raise your gross meaning and income, and that's how everybody is able to afford more life.
Thank you. Mr. DeBleek.
Thank you. I think the biggest thing we need to do is develop a long-range plan and vision for our community. We need to include how we're going to build our industry and attract businesses to the community. We need to look at how we're going to plan for and fund our industry structure needs, and we need to do that. I know the Vision 2040 project has brought a lot of people together and into the community to work on a lot of the vision and aspects of what the vision is for this community for the next 30 years, so. But I think it would be incongruous to put on the new mayor, whoever it is, and the city council, whoever they may be, to get together and work as a team, and work with the business community, and to work with the Vision 2040, and develop the plan for this community.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Well, I'd like to report to you not what I think is the most important issue before us, but what, what the opinion is of the 100 or so people that I've talked to at their homes, the people that respond to my website, which is howwilmerworks.com. And generally, well, not generally, the far and away largest issue that anybody wants to talk to me about is diversity. Far and away. The frustration over this issue, not being able to talk about it openly for fear of intimidation or being labeled a racist, this can't go on anymore. We have to negotiate, renegotiate a new social contract, and focus on our common interests, our common goals, and learn how to finally live together productively and peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagerley.
I would say it's the budget and finding ways to fund our streets and maintenance of our buildings. Our street assessment is, we have a split, a 60-40. And just because we want to do a street, the people where the street project is going still has a right to say no. And if they say no, they do, can take us to court, and that has happened a few times. So we have to be aware of that also, but it's find a way to fund our streets and maintenance of our buildings.
Thank you. We're now going to be turning to our closing remarks, and our first closer is Andrew Plowman.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, again, for your attention tonight and to these issues. We've discussed, many of which are very important, and there's a whole bunch more that are likely to come in the following weeks, months, and years. But our clock is ticking. The world is getting faster, and we got to work to keep up, or we're going to be outpaced real fast in this competitive market. That concerns me. We have to search for opportunities. Things that have been done in the past and done well might not necessarily work again in the future. We got to get creative. And we need to ensure that the next 25 years is above and beyond going to be better than the last. I've identified three challenges possibly that can help us get there. The first one would be a cultural aspect. We need to understand the culture. That partisan politics really doesn't have a place in what we're trying to do here. It's not about a left-right dynamic. That's not productive, it doesn't get stuff done. We got to focus on what works. Finance, money and finance is going to be an issue. It was 10, 20 years ago. It's going to be tomorrow, and it's going to be 20 years in the future. Instead, we got to get creative. And the third point, in order to do that, we need to be organized. And the best way that I see to do that is to develop a plan, a transparent plan, a thorough plan, and a rock-solid plan that does not deviate. I believe Vision 2040 has done a fantastic job of doing that. It kind of gives us a roadmap, where do we want to go, now we got to decide how to get there. I guess I just feel strongly that one of the big key points in that 2040 plan is next-gen leadership, bringing in new leaders. And I feel like if that doesn't happen, we're maybe doing the whole planning process a little bit of a disservice. So I think we kind of owe it to ourselves to get this right, and even more so, we owe it to our kids to get this right so that they have an opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. DeBleek.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I've lived and worked in Wilmer for nearly 40 years, and I care about the future of Wilmer. As a council member, you need to be accessible and out in the community. You need to be a good listener and hear what city staff and the community is saying. I am an experienced and effective council member. Through proven positive leadership to the community, I care about the future of Wilmer. I have built collaborations and partnerships and worked toward a vision of an improved and vibrant city. I pay attention to what the citizens are saying and what they want, and I research and gather all the facts and information on issues. Then I think logically and rationally about the situation the community has, and with the expertise I have, I've made sound decisions on these issues to create the best outcomes. Everyone within the community plays an important role in the process, and I listen to what you want for changes with the city, and I take actions where I can. I want children that grow up here to be proud they live here and live in Wilmer. Within our community, I'm an effective leader and will continue to be an effective council member. Please vote to reelect me, Bruce DeBleek.
Thank you. Mr. Enos.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming and listening. This whole process has just been an absolute pleasure for me. Last 20 years, are we better off, or are we worse off? This is really a simple choice, folks. If you think we're better off and heading on in the right path, in the right direction, then I would suggest that you vote for every incumbent who is running. If you think, on the other hand, that maybe we could do things a little differently, maybe you might like to have a different point of view, looking at problems from a different angle, as Steve said, through a different lens, if you'd like to get some people involved in government here who have no conflicts of interest, no favors to pay off, no friends to take care of, I'm your guy. Now, I've been accused a couple of times of not finishing things that I started, most notably my involvement with the EDC. Here's something that I learned a long time ago from very successful business people in New York. They give you this very small window, and they say, you've got 30 seconds, bud, impress me, or else go out the door, because there's someone right behind you. If we're going to make things happen in this town, we have to be light on our feet, we have to be fast, we have to drive the things that work, we have to throw away the things that don't, and we have to be willing to try. That means we're going to fail, but if we're not willing to fail, then that means we'll never succeed. We are at a crossroads, friends, make no mistake about it. Our town is poised to enter oblivion if we don't do something soon. If I want to send my kids to college, I'm sure not going to fund it with a 401K program that's invested in one or two or three companies. I want to spread my risk. And if we're going to raise all of the boats for prosperity, I don't want to just raise the luxury liners.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Fagerley.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I want to thank David Little and the West Central Tribune, and Mike Schrader, and KWLM, and the people in the audience here in the city of Wilmer, RAC8. I am Rick Fagerley. I've been on the council for 21 years. It seems like a long time, according to my opponent, but I still love Wilmer. I'm doing a good job. I'm considered the most neutral person on the council. I actually listen, and then I vote. I'll continue to do that in the next four years, if elected, and it's up to the voters and third ward. And you do have a choice this year, and hopefully you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
Again, thank you to the League and to everyone for being here tonight, and to the audience out there on the radio, and we'll be seeing this on TV, for listening and taking us all into account. It is time to help write the next great chapter in our city's history, and I believe I'm the candidate in the second ward who is ready and willing to get that job done. We need to look at our future, and I don't believe we've been in such a bad place that we can't move up and take care of that future. But here's the thing, it's not about us. It's not about any of us here at this table. It's not about what we're going to get out of this. It can't be what we're going to get out of this. This is about our kids, this is about our grandkids, this is about their future. Now, we need to have people to step up to the plate, and we do need to have people ready and trained to step in when the old leadership is stale or has just frankly burned out. I chair a Vision 2040 Subcommittee regarding next-generation leadership, and we're going to be having sessions beginning in January on just that specific type of leadership training. I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the future for our city, but we need to get things right now. We need a change on the council. We can't be looking back all the time and wishing for a Wilmer that is no longer here. It's time to wish and work for the Wilmer of the future. I'm Steve Gardner. I appreciate your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you again to all those involved in making this forum possible. You know, we're in the 21st century, and experience counts, especially moving forward. All levels of government, federal, state, county, and city, are going to see revenue shortages here in the next 10 to 20 years. We need people on the council that are experienced, have been on the committees, know how to run a budget. I've run a company in Wilmer for 35 years, along with my brothers, successful. I know how to budget. I'm spending other people's money, just like on the city council. I'm concerned where those dollars go and where they come from. I don't like higher taxes, and I won't promote higher taxes. Government today is pretty much the same as it was 100 years ago, and they should treat the taxpayers' money as if it were the taxpayers' money. We need experience on this council, folks, and this idea of dysfunction is perception-only. This council has overseen more economic development in the last four years than the prior two councils. I have a list, two pages long here, of economic development that's happened in Wilmer. This council has overseen that. My opponent says council had nothing to do with all that economic development. Well, everything that comes with the Planning Commission goes to the council for approval, folks. This council has approved more economic development and more staff recommendations than any other council. Over 95% of our votes are eight to zero. I need your vote on November 4th to continue economic development in Wilmer, and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters comprised of women and men, I'd like to thank each of the candidates for your willingness to run for public office and for your respectful participation and lively participation at tonight's forum. Thank you to our live audience and those listening and watching over KWLM Radio and WRAC TV. Thank you to the West Central Tribune for any follow-up news articles. The Wilmer Area League of Women Voters hopes you, our audience, has become better-informed citizens and are ready to get out and vote on November 4th. Those wishing for more information about League may contact us at l w v wilmermin@gmail.com. I also want to remind you, our audience, that all of the League of Women Voter forums for 2014, especially the school board forum from September 30th, are available on WRAC18, www.wilmermin.gov, WRAC TV on demand, KWLM, www.wilmarradio.com, decision 14. Thank you all, and have a great evening. Thank you.